All right, welcome everybody to the Monday Workshop, October 7th. And this morning, we're going to talk about Capitol Crossroads and the Des Moines Housing Summit. But first, I'm going to turn it over to the City Manager, who has a couple of comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Capitol Crossroads was an effort that looked at a number of different aspects of the community, one of which was the city of Des Moines. And they had a particular core that was called the Capitol Core. I think it was among 10 or so different areas of emphasis. And the Capitol Core had two components. There was a piece that focused on neighborhoods, and there was a piece that focused on downtown. I should have mentioned that the mayor and I were members of the Capitol Crossroads Steering Committee, and then I was co-chair of the Capitol Core area of emphasis. This morning, we have a presentation that addresses part of that Capitol Core element, which was on neighborhoods. Russ Cross has been the chair of that committee, done a really great job with a lot of other folks. Couple of councilmembers, Christine Hensley and Skip Moore, were on that committee as well. And we're going to kick it off with Mr. Cross making a few comments, and then staff will follow up as well. So, Russ, please.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. It is a pleasure to finally be here. Look at the smile of Councilmember Moore and Councilmember Hensley. This group got started in July of 2012, looking at ways we can make Des Moines neighborhoods even better. It took us much longer than we anticipated, but the end result is a product that we can, one, be proud of, and, two, can be eager to implement. I acknowledge, as you did, Mr. City Manager, the participation of councilmembers on the subcommittee. I want to thank you and the mayor for asking them to be a part of the effort, terrific resources throughout the whole effort, and also full of good ideas that were very helpful to the work of the committee. There are several committee members here to demonstrate their ongoing commitment to the whole process. I won't goof up by trying to acknowledge them, but I just want to thank them, because it was a dedicated group of folks that hung through it. As I said, we thought this was going to be a four- to five-month task, and it turned out to be a 14- or 15-month opportunity that really will be ongoing, because we want to make sure the recommendations of this group are implemented. I also want to thank the City Manager for identifying two terrifically talented staff people that helped us throughout the whole effort, Amber Lynch and Aaron Olson-Douglas, great people, served us well, and it was much fun to work with them. We appreciate not only their energy, but their continued enthusiasm. We'll start by rolling through a piece of the slides, and then, as the City Manager mentioned, Amber Lynch is going to come up and not only share with the council the learnings of our work the past several months, but some recommendations, and then I'll come back up and talk about what we need to do to make this happen. So we'll begin with background on Capitol Crossroads. As the City Manager mentioned, both he and the mayor were a part of the Capitol Crossroads Steering Committee. The City Manager co-chaired the Capitol Core piece, which was one of 11 elements. And within Capitol Crossroads, the Capitol Core element of it, where the arrow is pointed, were two subcommittees, one that focused on the needs for downtown, and the other one that focused on the needs for Des Moines neighborhoods. I think what's significant about this is that you had this Capitol Crossroads effort, which pulls together leaders from throughout central Iowa, recognizing the importance of the strength of Des Moines neighborhoods to advance the area economically. So the good thing about it is many, many people realize the importance of Des Moines neighborhoods, and that we need to do all we can to make them as good as they possibly can be. So here's just a map of Des Moines neighborhoods. We can be proud for many things in Des Moines, and one of them, I believe, is our neighborhoods. I travel the country much. I spend time with city officials and neighborhood leaders, and what makes Des Moines so special is that we have identified neighborhoods with experienced, talented leadership. Many cities around the country are trying to create neighborhoods, find leadership. We haven't. So here's a quick overview of the presentation this morning. We've provided you, we've started out by providing you a background on Capitol Crossroads. We'll talk a little bit about the subcommittee. We'll spend time on strategic initiatives, that's Amber's role. And then, because I'm a numbers guy, not really, we'll come back and talk about funding estimates, and then next steps. So here, guys, fills out where the Capitol Core effort fit into Capitol Crossroads. You'll note, again, as I said earlier, one of 11 elements of the Capitol Crossroads Initiative, which was publicly announced in April of 2011. We had 41 or so, plus or minus a few, committee members from throughout the Des Moines area with a common interest to make Des Moines neighborhoods the best that they can be. We began by identifying, excuse me, the purpose of our group was to identify an implementation plan for improving Des Moines neighborhoods that includes new ideas, tools, and strategies to complement and strengthen existing efforts. So here on this slide, you'll see implementation plan goals. One, improve the perception of and experience within Des Moines neighborhoods, increase demand for living in the Des Moines area. The good thing about it, as you all know, the population of Des Moines is increasing. We want to make sure it increases for the right reasons and in the right areas in an equality manner. We want to leverage existing assets and identify new resources. You'll see in this report that we believe there's a significant need for new resources to ensure that Des Moines neighborhoods are at their best. So I talked about this being a multi-month effort. We spent time in the summer of 2012 through the fall of 2012, understanding what's happening within Des Moines neighborhoods, who's doing what and why, what opportunities there are for improvements. From that, we developed principles and goals for this subcommittee, and then took them to the public in three town hall meetings, one held at Lincoln High School, one at Grandview University, and one at Drake University. We filed that up with assembling all that information and the feedback that we received and developed initiatives, tactics, and actions, hence we're in front of you today. We began with, the committee, the subcommittee began with a belief that we need to set forth key operating principles for our work to guide ultimately the recommendations that we would set forth. First, bring new and sustainable investment to Des Moines neighborhoods. Second, important to value the diversity within and among our neighborhoods. We recognize that we have diverse citizens from diverse cultures with diverse needs. Next, we recognize the importance of quality of life amenities to attract and retain residents. We recognize the importance of our young people and their educational success. We believe it is important to identify adequate resources to implement these tactics. And last, but extremely key element, is to engage neighborhoods in multiple ways, in an expanded way beyond the engagement that exists now through Des Moines neighbors, through the leadership of Des Moines neighborhood associations. Strategic Initiatives. Is this where you take over? No. Amber does not want to talk yet. So I will continue. Here are the five strategic initiatives that Amber will expound upon in a few minutes. One, advance efforts to address blighted residential properties. This was key from a variety of public hearings, even public hearings that the Neighborhood Revitalization Board held prior to the work of this subcommittee. Secondly, we believe it's important to build new, value-added housing in existing neighborhoods. Many vacant lots are available for enhanced development within our neighborhoods. Third, that it's important to revitalize neighborhood commercial areas. We know, as a subcommittee, this has caught the attention of the council the past couple of years. We believe efforts need to continue in this area. Fourth, that it's important to continue to upgrade infrastructure. The council has paid attention to this in a variety of ways, through research that we did, through information from city departments. We believe more can be done in this area as well. And then lastly, improve communications. One of the things we learned through the work of the committee, that many good things are happening within the city of Des Moines and with Des Moines public schools. What brought to the attention of us the importance of elevating this information, sharing it in a broader way, to help folks understand the value of living in Des Moines. And I've already shared with you many of the benefits that we believe will arise from those five strategic initiatives that I just laid out. Increased competitiveness within the region, which is the overall goal of Capitol Crossroads, increased property evaluations, higher return on investment for property owners, improved conditions, better use of our land, more walkable living environments for our residents, continuing our reputation as a growing, thriving community, and vibrant neighborhoods. Will I continue? Oh, boy. All right, Amber, whatever you say. Next, funding. We talked about funding, I've talked about funding earlier, we're going to talk about it often through this presentation. You all know that federal entitlements have diminished the past few years, and that's necessitated the need to look elsewhere for financial support. This slide lays out information that council and staff are well aware of, that there's a diminishing, the federal government has become a diminishing resource for many of our neighborhood-focused activities. Approximately $3.5 million of government, excuse me, general obligation funds per year go to Neighborhood Finance Corporation, Neighborhood Development Corporation, and NERP. I have a hard time with NERP, but you all know what it is. We're improving infrastructure within just a couple neighborhoods each year. However, additional dollars are needed. Catalysts. We spent much time talking about and defining catalysts, out of a belief that this is a way to provide the additional resources that are necessary to help Des Moines neighborhoods become better. Here, we spell out that a catalyst is a person or a thing that causes change. We note that the catalyst can come in a variety of forms, educational, cultural, faith-based, healthcare, corporate, and then through transit and infrastructure. Des Moines has been blessed with a variety of types of catalysts. We can cite numerous examples. Many of them were a part of the subcommittee's work, and I mentioned three of them earlier. Drake University, Grandview University, and Des Moines Public Schools, each have played a role in, as a catalytic change agent within neighborhoods around their institutions. But there are other examples as well, our medical facilities, businesses, and churches. We believe once greater need is brought to the attention of these catalysts and others, that that will spur change and spur the generation of additional resources to make the change possible. This slide spells out for you the roles that the various catalysts can play, from creating incentive programs, loan programs in particular, that encourage folks to buy homes within Des Moines neighborhoods who are employed by these particular catalysts. I won't spell them out specifically in the interest of time. Now, we have gotten to Amber, I believe. You ready for this? Amber will share with the council, as I mentioned earlier, what we learned from the work of the subcommittee, the opportunities that face Des Moines neighborhoods, and how we will go about tackling those opportunities. Amber, all yours.
Thank you, Russ. Good morning, everyone. Amber Lynch, I'm a neighborhood planner in the Community Development Department, and along with Aaron Olson-Douglas have been helping to staff this committee for the last 15 months. At this point, I'd like to take you into more of the details of the five strategic initiatives that Russ laid out. I'm going to go through them rather quickly for the sake of time, but would be happy to come back and answer any questions you might have about any of them at the end of the presentation. The first one calls for us as a community to take a more proactive approach to addressing blighted residential properties within our neighborhoods. These are the problem properties that all of you, as councilmembers, get frequent calls about, either because they are vacant for one reason or another, due to foreclosure or just abandonment, or because their condition has deteriorated to the point where they are simply a nuisance for their neighbors. The city has a capacity to deal with these properties, but that capacity is fairly limited. Some neighborhoods have a very high percentage of properties that are in this condition, and that really has a negative impact on their overall health and desirability as a neighborhood. If we look across the city, the neighborhoods that are shaded the darkest have the highest concentration of these types of properties. And so to address this problem, the subcommittee recommends, first and foremost, that we create a larger pipeline of properties for redevelopment purposes. Now, this could be a variety of interventions ranging from acquisition and rehab of the existing structure to demolition in the case where a structure may no longer be salvageable. We foresee creating a new entity, a land bank or land trust of some sort, in order to do this work. We feel that's a missing tool in the community right now, and that it would be really valuable to have an organization whose mission and purpose it is to actively acquire, strategically hold some of these properties, and then market them for redevelopment. With this proposal, we hope that we can triple the number of properties that we are redeveloping over a five-year period. The next tactic under this initiative really looks at ways that we can encourage better property maintenance within our neighborhoods. One idea within this tactic that I'd like to have you pay particular attention to, because I think it pertains to the council especially, is exploring the possibility of a property maintenance code that could be enforced at the point when a property is sold from one person to another. In addition to that, we would look at ways to expand existing programs that are out there in the community, things like Habitats Rock the Block program and Rebuilding Together's Volunteer Days. These are incredibly successful programs. If we paired that with code enforcement with the city and went into a small area to do all of those things at the same time, we could just leverage those resources and really make a greater impact. The next tactic under this initiative looks for opportunities to bring catalysts into this work, not only looking at properties surrounding their facilities, but also engaging them in incentives for employees to purchase homes in the area. We actually have an example of this in the community already. Drake University provides down payment assistance for employees who purchase a home adjacent to campus or within close proximity of campus. What if that down payment assistance from Drake was paired with a match from the community, and then with a brand-new rehabbed home or newly constructed home in the neighborhood? I think that a program would be even more attractive to people. And so looking at ways we might engage catalysts in specific opportunities in their areas. The last tactic under here is something that you'll see as a common theme throughout all of the initiatives, and that is looking for ways to really concentrate and leverage our resources, so that we're making sure we are having the maximum impact possible. The second initiative is very closely related to the first. It also deals with housing, but looks more specifically at building newly constructed housing in our neighborhoods. We believe, our subcommittee and the public that we talked with throughout this process, we believe that one of the strengths that Des Moines has is the quality of our architectural character in our neighborhoods, the quality of the construction of those older homes, and the variety of housing types that we have within our neighborhoods. Not just price points, but sizes, types of living situations ranging from apartments and condos to townhomes and single-family homes. So we believe that there is more opportunity to bring that level of quality into new infill housing in our existing neighborhoods. The tactics related to this initiative kind of echo those under the first initiative, looking at creating a larger pipeline of property available for this type of infill development. We have a fairly significant inventory of vacant lots already, so looking at those, but also looking at opportunities where we may have taken down a public nuisance structure. What can we put back on that land that would better utilize that property? We do, in some ways, have a slight disadvantage in that it is always easier to build a house out in an undeveloped area than it is in an existing neighborhood. There are some challenges there, and so looking at our incentives that we already have, are they effective? What else can we match those with in order to encourage this type of new development in the city? Again, these last two echo the first initiative, looking for opportunities with our catalysts in the community, looking for development opportunities that might complement those catalysts. For example, what does the workforce for a specific employer need? What are their housing needs? But then also, on the flip side, what might that catalyst offer to the community that could be an asset to a particular subset of our population? For example, senior living adjacent to a university, could they capitalize on some of the cultural opportunities that that university brings? Would that be a nice pairing of a housing opportunity along with an institution? And as I mentioned, both of these initiatives have that recurring theme of concentrating our efforts in areas, so that we make sure that we are making the most effective use of our limited resources. The third initiative moves on to looking at our neighborhood commercial areas. As we look across the region, Des Moines is losing retail sales to the suburbs, and we believe that there is opportunity to recapture some of those sales here within the city. Again, we have a different situation in that our neighborhood commercial areas are, they're just in a different state than the newer development. We also may have more commercially-zoned property than our market can support at this point, and so it would be very helpful if we could review those things and look for ways that we can strengthen the commercial that we have, and look at ways we might repurpose some of that land to better suit our current needs. The tactics under this initiative call for us to figure out how we can position these areas differently. If you think about your favorite neighborhoods in the cities that you visit around the country, I would venture to guess that vibrant commercial areas play a strong role in the reason why those places are your favorites to go. Either they have great restaurants, or they have great places where you can hear music, or they might have cultural venues, or they really just have services that meet the needs of their residents. You can run downstairs and pick up your dry cleaning and grab a cup of coffee all on your way to work. So how can we think about our commercial areas differently? Another opportunity that we believe we have is to capitalize on the growing ethnic diversity in our community. Again, when you think of other cities like Chicago or San Francisco or New York, places like Chinatown or Little Italy, those are places that people want to go to. And as our population grows more diverse, what opportunities do we have here in Des Moines to build on that ethnicity as an asset? With this fourth initiative of upgrading infrastructure in our community, I'd like you to think about first impressions when you go into a neighborhood. Think of how you experience that neighborhood as you are driving around it or walking on its sidewalks. Des Moines, again, is faced with a different set of challenges from our suburbs when it comes to maintaining and improving our infrastructure. But if we think about it in terms of accessibility for our seniors and for those in our population who are less physically able, if we think about it in terms of our walkability, which is an extremely desirable quality in neighborhoods right now, and is something that we have already, and that is not easily replicated, as easily replicated with newer development standards. If we think about the ways that we manage our stormwater and how we might do that better, especially as we continue to get kind of more significant rain events. The challenge here, of course, is that infrastructure is expensive, and often the costs exceed the benefits in the short term. It also has a life cycle, and we cover a large area with the city, and so it is challenging enough to keep up with the maintenance of what we have already, let alone to think about making progress and continuing to improve upon what we already have. Many of you may be familiar with this graph. It is based on the Pavement Condition Index that our Public Works Department goes out and does every two years. And it really just looks at different scenarios based on our various levels of investment. And we can continue to kind of maintain our streets where they are at. We can, they may decline in quality, or we could improve upon their quality depending on the different levels of investment. Our subcommittee believes that our community needs to invest more in our infrastructure. When we take a look at the Neighborhood Infrastructure Rehabilitation Program, or NERP, as we all fondly call it, we are looking at a program that is extremely successful, not only because it makes that immediate, visible change in a neighborhood, but also because it is a very successful example of concentrating resources in a small geographic area. So imagine if that program were broadened to include not just repairs to our existing streets, creps, and sidewalks, but also ensuring that our neighborhoods have connected sidewalk networks, ensuring that the parks in our neighborhoods are the best that they can be, ensuring that we are dealing with any stormwater or sewer issues that we might have in a neighborhood all at the same time. Des Moines has a highly valuable inventory of parkland already. This is a major asset for us. We know that parks increase property values. We know that they have health benefits for individuals, and that they are places that create community through shared experiences. Our parks are one of the things that Our parks are one of the things that really makes Des Moines have a high quality of life. There we go. And so, under this initiative, our committee recommends that we look at a new minimum standard of quality for our infrastructure in the city, that we bolster what is already working, that we broaden and expand those programs. We propose looking at infrastructure as a potential catalyst for private investment in our commercial areas. We have many successful streetscape projects underway. We have demand for more of those types of projects. I think we have seen the success of those projects in the East Village and on Ingersoll, up in Highland Park, at spurring additional investment in those commercial areas. And then finally, we suggest that there be funding set aside specifically for neighborhoods to empower them to create that identity and character and that vibrancy that really makes a place special. The last initiative really has kind of two pieces to it, and as Russ mentioned, the first really deals with communicating about the assets that we have. The Des Moines School District and the city are already doing many, many good things. The neighborhoods are doing many good things. We need to make sure that that is the message that is being communicated, not only in the region, but outside of the region as well. As Des Moines continues to receive national attention, we want to make sure that as people are coming to our community, that our employers, our realtors, our developers, and others are talking about our neighborhoods and our schools as places of choice. So, we need to change the conversation a little bit. And the tactic here is really just to better tell our story and to invest in the marketing and public relations of that story. The Greater Des Moines Partnership already has an initiative underway to do this for the region with a new web portal. The school district has also been making changes to their website. We believe that pairing this with a dedicated marketing campaign around living in the city of Des Moines would be really beneficial to us for many, many reasons. The second piece of this looks at the importance of the relationships between our neighborhoods and schools, and it also acknowledges the role that educational attainment plays in the health of our neighborhoods. Now, the education area is something that is being focused on by actually several other Capitol Crossroads committees, more specifically. And so, we didn't want to duplicate that work here, but we did want to acknowledge the importance of it. And so, this initiative also proposes to enhance the connections among our neighborhoods and schools and among our governments. We're, again, looking to leverage the existing assets that we have in order to elevate our outcomes and to elevate the conversation in the community about what Des Moines has to offer. This also looks at ways that we can cultivate civic leadership. Our community often spends time cultivating business leadership, cultivating entrepreneurial leadership. We need to also invest in our civic leadership. I think overall, this last initiative, it really acknowledges that neighborhoods are not just physical places. Their vibrancy comes from the people who live there as well. And so, what is it, what do we have already to offer those residents, and what can we do in order to give them more opportunities? With that, I will turn it back over to Russ, and he'll walk you through how we think, or what we think we might need in order to make this happen.
It's appropriate that Russ is from Wells Fargo for this section.
Thank you. Amber, thank you. She just proved why she is so good and why we have complimented her so many times. Funding, we've alluded to the importance of this throughout our presentation this morning, and that there's a variety of ways to achieve what Amber laid out for you as the proposals and plans from the subcommittee. These funding assumptions reflect a five-year time horizon, indicate investment from the city and from outside resources. Cities throughout the country are recognizing that in order for them to pay the right kind of attention to neighborhoods, that resources need to come from more than just city coffers. We're recognizing that in our presentation today. We were sensitive to, as we costed out everything, adding staff, so what you'll find here is that we're very careful about how we believe these initiatives can be achieved in an efficient manner so that the dollars that we do believe are necessary to make changes in Des Moines' neighborhoods have direct impact. So, this, the first funding estimate deals with, the first initiative that we talked about, and that's addressing blighted neighborhoods. We pointed out to you earlier that we believe we need to triple the amount of effort devoted towards blighted properties within Des Moines. There are four key elements to this piece. We believe the additional cost to achieving these is slightly more than $3 million per year over five years, addressing the properties, creating a land bank, expanding the Neighborhood Finance Corporation repair program, adding code enforcement to neighborhood blitz efforts, and we can talk about that in greater detail when more time allows. I do want to expand upon Neighborhood Finance Corporation. We can be proud of many nonprofits that exist within Des Moines that are helping make a difference. Kansas City has discovered that Neighborhood Finance Corporation is doing wonderful things here in Des Moines, and they are trying to figure out how to replicate it, so we can be proud of what we've been doing for many years. Second of the five initiatives, I'll have to look up here to see better, continues to focus on the blighted residential properties. This one, you'll recall, deals with creating new housing opportunities. So, the cost here is estimated to be roughly $2.25 million per year, gets developing a strategic plan to build new homes, revitalize commercial areas, doubles the funding for another successful nonprofit initiative that you all have been directly involved in for a number of years, and that's the Neighborhood Development Corporation, and doubles the streetscape budget. Next major area is upgrading infrastructure. We heard the importance of this from the city council members that served on our subcommittee. We heard the importance of this from a variety of folks that, on the committee and in the public, as we did our town hall meetings. So, in this area, we believe an additional $12.5 to $17 million is necessary to be spent annually, improving our streets to a higher standard, expanding the NERP program so that more than a couple neighborhoods can benefit from this annually, and, as Amber pointed out, expanding the elements that are served by the NERP program. It addresses the life cycle of park amenities. We pointed out briefly in our report that more attention needs to be paid to our parks. There's a foundation, as you all know, that's helping bring attention to the needs of the parks. More needs to be done. And lastly, it creates grant funds for quality-of-life projects where neighborhoods can raise their hand, apply for special grants to help a pocket park in their area, help an entrance to their area, ways that they believe that can bring, continue to attractiveness to their neighborhoods. And lastly, Amber spoke to it well. Our belief is that there needs to be improved communications. This focuses on helping support Public Relations Campaign in conjunction with the Greater Des Moines Partnership that talks about the need to continue to enhance the leadership skills that exist within our neighborhoods. We believe this added cost is roughly $100,000 a year. You add all that up, and it's a figure that, for some, may be staggering, but it's an investment that's so important to be made, and we believe that there are resources available in the community when the story is told. And the story for us is twofold. One, it recognizes that we're doing a whole bunch of good things within Des Moines, and we've been doing it for a number of years. We just need to do more. And we highlighted in this report also that there are some new tools that we should put in the toolbox to continue to make a difference for Des Moines neighborhoods. We're excited, and we hope you are also. So, in summary, we focus, I think we'll skip the summary in the interest of time. Amber and Aaron just love to create slides. Next steps. We're here before you this morning to get your feedback. A couple of you have been actively involved, as I pointed out. We want to hear from you. Are we headed in the right direction? We want to get your questions. We want to share with you the thoughts we have on next steps with this report, what we thought it was important to spend time with you all this morning. Thank you. Comments, questions?
Well, opening up, I thank all of you for the presentation and the 15 months' worth of work. Obviously, a very wide and deep analysis of what's going on in the city of Des Moines. Ask any of our council members if they have any questions. Skip or Christine Skip?
First of all, Russ, I can't thank you enough. Like I told you earlier, you must have a lot of intestinal fortitude to put up with those first four months. I know you're very frustrated, and so are we. I think at the end of the day, this is probably the most important document to come out for the neighborhoods in this city since Stockard-Angler of the 80s. So, I thank you, and I thank staff for the work they did, and I thank everybody that was on the committee. I wish there'd been more neighborhood participation. We only had a few, you know, Marty stuck it out, and Kimberly stuck it out. Laura Monday was only at one meeting, and then she decided to exit. But I have a question for, out of curiosity, for Amber. On your upgrade infrastructure problem statement number four, you've got 5% of city streets are not up to urban standards. Where did you come up with that figure?
Just pulled it out of the air. No, no, that was with conversations with our Public Works Department and based on some analysis that was done about two years ago. So, we figured that probably hasn't changed significantly since then. I think the number that we got back when we looked into this a little bit further was that there are about 100 miles of streets that don't have permanent paving on them within the city. And so, some of those may also lack curb and gutter and those types of things.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Christine?
I just want to thank everybody, Russ and Amber and Aaron and all the staff and the members of this committee, because there was just a ton of work done, and this is a very impressive report. I think Amber and Aaron are the two that really deserve all the credit because the reports kept getting better and better with the information, so.
They're good.
A couple of comments. Number one, when we're talking about the housing in the neighborhoods and dealing with problem properties and some of the action items that we're talking about in there, I think it's really important, because we're going to have a segment here next on the Housing Summit, that it is as easy for for-profit and nonprofits to come in and build and make changes in neighborhoods. Right now, we have too many for-profit developers that have chosen not to develop in the city, and it's really just the nonprofits. When you look at the numbers permit-wise, when you see Habitat is the number-one builder of single-family homes in the city, to me, that's a red flag, and so, I think we need to be really sensitive to that. The school board, I believe it's really important. I would hope that we would give this presentation to the school board. I know we had a couple of, we had a board member, but.
We'll do it on a night that for sure Bill Good is in attendance.
Yeah, because Bill was very good, I think, at attending, but.
Absolutely.
We really need to have school board informed and part of this. And then, the last item I would just ask, the dollar amount we know is really out there, and we're going to begin budget discussions. We know that this is a five-year plan that we're talking about, but I almost feel like we need to have some prioritization as to what we really want to see in this budget cycle, because we've got some steep budget issues to deal with. And, you know, right now, we would love to do the whole project. Obviously, we would all love, and I remember back when NFC and NDC were first outlined, and we thought that was a steep mountain, but look at, we made the difficult decision. We bond for that, and so, I would really like to see, from the committee's perspective, some priorities. Okay, year one, this is really what we want to have done, and we want to have dollars allocated for it.
Thank you.
Ryan?
I too want to thank everybody, and Russ and everybody, the staff, for putting this together. I think Christine just hit on something that's, I think, crucial to this entire conversation, which is the funding numbers are way out there. I mean, I looked at compared to what we are funding for NDC currently versus what was suggested. But I think there's a, I think there's a framework here, and I like the idea of the critical mass concentration of all departments coming together, all nonprofits coming together, taking a look at one neighborhood at one time and putting all their resources together to make improvements there. And I think there's an opportunity here, city manager, to, moving forward on a trial basis, at least start this process within the next year. And some of those funds, for example, NDC's, they're not committed funds, but they'll go do projects, and so, if you have this effort and critical mass to focus on one neighborhood and maybe do a pilot project there, and then see how things work out, and then move forward and expand as, and learn lessons, both good and bad from what we've done, I think would be an excellent opportunity here to do pilot projects without spending a whole bunch of money initially, but seeing what works and what doesn't work.
Mr. Coleman?
Very much appreciate the presentation and all the work that's gone into it. I serve on a couple of the Capitol Crossroads Committees and very excited about it. Two thoughts, I agree with everything that's been said so far, so instead of reiterating that, let me focus on two other things. I'm really intrigued at the degree to which many of our other communities in the metro area do invest in a promotional campaign, you know, giving our own residents and others around the metro area a chance to really take pride in the great things that are happening and the things that we think are worthy of people's support and investment and so forth. And we don't, we haven't really done that, and it really is probably not an appropriate expenditure for the city to do with property taxes when we have so many other priorities. So, that's number one. It ties to number two, and that is that the group that I hope we reach out to significantly are the affiliate chamber groups in the city, and it doesn't show up here at the end, but the fact that we're a big city and we have the South and East Des Moines and the West Side Chamber, we have probably less interaction with them, thinking about the totality of the city and what they might do to help us move forward, and I think that Capitol Crossroads Partnership can really do something about that. And it's in their interest as business owners and community leaders to, you know, to really engage in these strategies, and I hope that is one of the things that the partnership continues to bring to the table, really engaging what's hundreds of business members in those chambers towards these goals. And, you know, we have one suburban community that is on TV all the time. They're very proud to be the 72nd-best community in the country. We're number one in all kinds of categories, and, you know, sometimes we don't take time to brag that up.
Quite well taken.
Thank you.
Skip, one other point?
Yeah, I missed the recognition of Aaron Todd. He's neighborhood leader from Riverbend, and I didn't want to miss you on that. The fact that he made almost every single meeting is very admirable and very appreciated.
Mr. Manager, any comments?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make it very short and quick. First, I wanted to acknowledge Superintendent Tom Ahearn and Bill Good.
First, I wanted to acknowledge Superintendent Tom Ahart and Bill Good from the Des Moines Public Schools. You're here, thank you for your attendance today and I think you're here for the next item as well, but thank you for coming. The last slide that's up here about the need for community funding and support is really critical to this. This is an issue, in my view, that the city, the city with all of our resources, we probably don't have enough to take on this entire challenge. And there's going to have to be an effort to reach out beyond our organization to bring more funds to bear. There's no way we can achieve this task without more resources that go into this. And I think a campaign can be put forth. I think we can be successful at that, but it's going to take a concerted effort. And I think this plan provides a template for that. It points a direction. And I think with this in hand, there's an ability to kind of go out on the road, so to speak, and promote this and use it as a way to generate interest. And Russ, I think you teed it up really well in that sense. So my hope is that at the conclusion of this, that you'll be able to take this out, present it to other folks, see if we can generate some support and some momentum, not only here in the community, but maybe in the legislature as well, because I think there's efforts there at the state level that could be brought to bear that would help with the resources. So again, add my voice to my, congratulations to all of you for a really great piece of work.
All right, let's move right ahead. We're running just a little bit behind and jump into the Des Moines Housing Summit. Overview of collaborative meetings held to identify options for increasing new home construction in Des Moines.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Phil Delafield, Community Development Department. And we're here this morning also to review the Housing Summit. This is an effort that began in 2012 and has worked forward into 2013. Briefly, an overview, this was initiated in the summer of 2012 that began with discussions with Hubble Realty. And the question was asked, why are the homes, why are more new homes being built in the suburbs than in Des Moines? And how can new home construction in Des Moines be increased? There was a series of collaborative meetings that were held with the stakeholders. Stakeholders are listed there and many of those are in the audience here tonight and I, or this morning, so I thank them for attending with us. They included the home builders, the developers, realtors, the public schools, the chambers, the partnership and the DCA. These groups developed a focus on three areas, the marketing, the land development and the home construction. I'll review those briefly with you. The goal, the stakeholder identified goals, was to increase the demand for living in Des Moines, invest in marketing in Des Moines, this is a common theme that you heard earlier in the previous presentation, improve the perception of the community and the schools and promote those amenities that are unique to Des Moines. There are also the barriers to land development and home construction that were identified in these stakeholder groups, including increased communication, process streamlining, regulation reduction and bottlenecks and consistency with the suburbs. Focusing on the marketing goals, the group chose to try to focus, identify what draws people to Des Moines, why residents choose Des Moines and market accordingly. They would like to gather input from the minority populations and include focus on these groups. One of the comments that was made at several of the meetings was that those in attendance of the community meetings, the stakeholder meetings, did not necessarily represent what our community looks like, what our schools look like, what our classrooms look like. And that was an important distinction that we felt that should be, should be advanced. And then also to engage the neighborhood groups to market the community so that those that know the neighborhoods the best, those that are the most invested in the neighborhoods should also be a part of this marketing campaign. The perception of the city and schools was very important. There was a feeling that a marketing consultant should be engaged to take this PR campaign and engage the stakeholders at all levels to participate. And we especially focused on the realtor and the media participation as needed and dedicate staff and financial resources to sustain the effort. I will point out that this was the self-identified number one issue that came out of this Housing Summit focus. There was a lot of discussion on the unique niche housing that are, opportunities that are in Des Moines, that those things that are, that are just part of Des Moines, that the suburbs perhaps are now trying to create. This is a lifestyle that the suburbs have not yet been able to match and we believe that competition through the unique architectural character is one of the ways that we could focus on these things and then utilize infill development to revitalize and enhance the existing neighborhoods. The roles for the city and the stakeholders, the city is only one of many stakeholders necessary for a successful marketing campaign. It's necessary that all participate and this needs to be a long-term commitment of resources for the marketing effort to be sustainable. Second self-identified area was the land development concerns. And in this area, we focused on individual comments and individual areas that were raised during the discussions. For example, the off-premise wayfinding signs and there was concerns that it's very difficult for off-premise signs to mark the locations of new subdivisions and so forth. And there are difficulties in having content-specific sign regulations. And so the recommendation from the staff is that the sign ordinance, group C signs along with billboards and off-premise advertising, maybe the utilization of the available advertising option is one that can be used. It would be very difficult, very, very difficult to carve out a special sign ordinance that would allow specific for realtor signs. Another one that was raised was the difficulty of the tree mitigation ordinance. Tree regulations were cited as a barrier to development. The request was that the tree regulation ordinance be lightened. The recommendation is to perhaps help the development community understand that our ordinance is a mitigation plan and it's not a, it allows options. And so we conducted with forestry a workshop in October of 2012 and we think that that ought to be an ongoing effort. There was concern about the increasing levels of review at the Plan and Zoning Commission and the request was made that administrative review for P&amp;Z for certain types of site plans be allowed. We list two options there for you. Allow either an administrative approval for density reductions and maintain the current process for density increases or allow, option two, administrative approval for all multifamily projects. There is a delay that occurs between the Plan and Zoning Hearing and the council meetings just due to the calendars. There was a request that these reviews go to, go to city council in a more expedited manner. And so we, we recommend that there are adjustments that are made in how hearing dates are set to reduce the delays. Another self-identified concern was the planned urban development restoration bonds. The view is that they're unnecessary, they aren't used elsewhere in the community. We believe this is also a reasonable request that the grading permits may cover the restoration that's necessary. So the recommendation is that you consider elimination of the restoration bonds. And similarly, there's a council currently, council approval is currently required to release subdivision bonds. The recommendation is to allow administrative release and require renewal, renewal for only the outstanding improvements that remain. There was a concern voiced about the P&amp;Z hearing and confusion that sometimes occurs because of the, frankly, the size of the Plan and Zoning Commission. There was a request that we reduce the size of the Plan and Zoning Commission and this was viewed as rather problematic. So the recommendation you see before you is to clarify the roles and expectations for developers, citizens, neighbors and the commission. We have taken some steps in this regard as well. So the, there has been additional training that was conducted earlier this spring. The online subscription to the P&amp;Z agendas are now available and then we're developing a best practices manual for developers. Then there's the confusion that occurs with neighborhood interaction. There was an increase, there was a request to increase staff participation at neighborhood meetings. This is also problematic from a staffing level concern and the recommendation you see before you is to maintain the current staff involvement as an unneeded, as unneeded basis. We can't participate in all of those meetings, but, and we have a need to remain professional and objective in the, in the, in the development process. But we believe that the best practices manual will help provide a better understanding of the best ways to conduct a neighborhood meeting. The third area of concern was the home construction arena and there were some communication barriers, processes, regulations and certificate of occupancy issues that were focused. They, there was a request for online access to permit and inspection records, access to inspectors via cell phone and a request for an annual builders' meeting. As you can see up there, we have provided online permit access. We have released inspectors' cell phone numbers. We held a meeting in February 2013 and we have a new, another annual meeting coming up here yet this fall, October 17th. Again, inconsistency with the suburbs was voiced. There was a request to reduce layers of regulation and a single point of contact, reduce review times and utilize combination inspection on homes. The actions that have been taken thus far include staff training to centralize information. We have developed additional checklists, directory and home construction guides to help streamline the process and we have begun changing the promotional track to require some combination inspection skills of our inspectors. In summary, you can see here, communication improvements are continuing. Consistency is emphasized in the regulatory environment with the suburbs. Increased developer neighborhood communication is also imperative to reduce development barriers. We've asked for a little bit of direction from you. We believe that there are some changes that are reasonable and can be made. We believe that the marketing effort is the most significant issue here that needs to be addressed and we don't believe that the city has the resources to do that alone. It should be a partnership. So we're asking for your direction this morning. Do you believe it reasonable to eliminate the restoration bonds, the administrative release of subdivision bonds? Do you believe that it is appropriate for administrative review of multifamily site plans and again, the issue with the collaborative marketing effort? And very briefly and rapidly, trying to catch us back up, that's the presentation and I'm.
Any questions, council members, Ms. Hensley?
Phil, could you go back to the ones that you're asking for direction on, please? Just that one right before the questions, this one?
This one, yes.
Could you just share with us now, as I look at those four bullet points, how does this compare to the suburban communities? Because, and I appreciate the presentation very much, but the comment that I continue to hear is, is that we still have, there's still differences in perception as reality in the developers' world that they feel is more challenging and difficult to do development in Des Moines than it is in the suburbs. So if, could you give me some background on those as to what they do?
Sure. Mrs. Hensley, the, these items here, the PUD restoration bond, for example, we are unique in the metropolitan area that when we have a planned urban development, we are the only community that has this. So I believe this is, would promote consistency in that area. The suburbs, many of them already allow administrative release of the subdivision bonds. This change would require ordinance changes in order to allow it. The administrative review of multifamily site plans, that's a little bit different. Very few of the suburbs have administrative review in these areas. Most of their items go through their council process. So this would be something that is more unique to Des Moines. We already have a number of administratively approved site plans that occur and it's our belief that if the, if the standards are correct, that the, that the staff is able to handle these items very adequately. And in fact, there are a number of instances where staff recommendations are usually followed at the, at the Plan and Zoning Commission and again, at council. And then the marketing effort, this isn't done at this time, so it's, it'd be unique to this area. The construction regulatory environment is constantly changing and there are challenges. Many will say that Des Moines is difficult or different or more problematic. I will submit to you that it is always difficult to develop in an already developed area. That is one of our unique challenges. It will be easier to do a greenfield than it will be to do infill development. We can make, take steps that will help in those areas. But remember that the construction science is constantly evolving and there are advantages that come with code changes and there are disadvantages that come with code changes. And I think we have to be mindful of those items as we move forward.
Skip?
I find it interesting that they want the capital city of Iowa to change what we do instead of the smaller suburbs around us. Do you know of any time that these developers have went to the suburbs and said, would you mind changing to what the capital city does?
I am not aware of any of those instances. I believe that in each community, there are pressures that are placed that are intended to help various constituencies. So I can't point to a specific one, but I believe it happens.
Thank you.
Phil. Excuse me. Phil, on eliminating the restoration bonds, how can we control that if we don't require bonds, some way to penalize those who don't do what is reasonably required?
Mr. Mahaffey, I appreciate the question you're asking. Can we still control the risks, the hazards that come with development should something fail if we don't have the PUD restoration bond? We believe that the, it's, the current program doubles up. We have a requirement for a grading permit that also carries protection and it would be applicable to a planned unit development, just as if, as the PUD. The PUD restoration bond is unique to any other type of zoning district. So we believe that the grading ordinance requirements covers that adequately.
So do you, do you know how much of a cost that is? It would be a savings to the developer?
I'm sorry, I don't. I can get that for you.
All right. Phil, thank you very much and to all the staff that has worked on this. It's sort of an ongoing, evolving thing. I was talking to the manager here for a minute. Remembering, Bob, as you remember, back in the nineties, we had a review of this whole process when similar complaints came out of the developer community about permitting and processing and approvals of plans. And as a result, the MAC, we unified an awful lot of those codes and made sure that everything was done pretty much the same in every one of the communities. And it is interesting, and I will say this as a former Plan and Zoning Commissioner, that it, it was frustrating, I think, from, from the city's side of it as we worked with some developers, that, that would come in and get a site plan approved and then as soon as they got the approval, they went out and pretty much did whatever they wanted to. And in the city, there was, there was no adequate level of protection to require them to deliver what they had been approved in the first place. Because as a, for instance, I noticed the tree mitigation plan or in some cases, preservation plans that were required at the P&amp;Z level, we found that some of the folks went out and just knocked down every tree in the place and would start all over, knowing that there was very little, if any, penalty for doing so. And so at any rate, I think that there are reasons why we want to preserve and protect some of our assets, knowing that those are assets that are going to accrue to the homeowners in those neighborhoods once they're up and, you know, as time, as time goes on. But certainly, we want to stay in step with current development trends and appreciate everybody's effort in doing it and also the developer community for coming forward and having the ongoing discussion. Mr. Manager, any comment?
Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you. The recommendations that were outlined there by Phil Delafield towards the end are ones that I think for the most part require council action, ordinance amendments. So we'll bring those back to you as we prepare the paperwork and get your definitive direction at that point. The one recommendation about marketing though, I think is a really compelling concept and it's something, in my view, that can't be done just by the city. It's really a collaborative effort with Des Moines Public Schools, I see the superintendent here on that point, and perhaps others. And it's, it's one thing that we think, if we pursue that in a collaborative sort of way, that we.
we can be effective. There's a lot to sell about being in Des Moines. We just don't do it very well. And there's some benefit that could be gained by doing that, in our judgment, and we'd like to pursue that. It's going to be a little different course. We haven't done that in the past at all, or at least effectively, and it's a direction that I think could really provide some benefit. And we'd like to do that, but with your guidance on the issue as well.
Can we hear some public comment, maybe?
Yeah, well, we got two other councilmembers. Chris from Chris.
I had a, and I won't drag this out, but I do want to kind of ask manager for you to take a look at this as these come back. You know, it seems to me that the goal, the kind of the community character plan for a lot of our developing areas involves kind of, you know, moving from corridors and high traffic areas in multifamily to, down to single-family dwellings and trying to accommodate, you know, a mixed package of housing. And I know for multifamily, we've created our, you know, kind of earned abatement, my, you know, my words with different. I guess I'd like a little reaction from your office as to how those have worked. There's different things. It's been a couple of years since we established those. Are we seeing our proportionate share of growth compared to the rest of the metro area? Are there things that we would tweak or change about that? It just seems to me that part of the single-family new development is often tied to the ability to build a multifamily or townhouse or buy attached as we kind of, you know, move into residential neighborhoods. And I want to make sure that that's not a stumbling block for private development. I'm, you know, I've been an advocate of trying to increase those standards, especially for tax credit, nonprofit development. And part of my question is, is there an ability to make sure that we have high, high standards for those that have tax credits that are paid to build, and it's actually to their benefit to, you know, to expend more money on projects? Does that make sense?
It does make sense, Mr. Coleman. And the council has shown some real leadership there, but I think the question you're asking is, what's the data show?
Yeah.
And we can prepare some information about that. The other thing, just to note along those lines, is last session, the legislature changed some law in terms of how you assess commercial and residential property. That will have a profound impact on taxes paid. And I think as you look at incentives and tax abatements, we need to factor that impact in as well.
Well, and also remember that when they, when the state approves those tax credit deals, they sort of lowered their standards and have a top level. And for instance, when we're trying to put some of these developments into historic areas, they won't allow the upgrades necessary to have them look like they're part of that neighborhood. It's a nice way to put it, I think. Ms. Hensley?
Two things. We've talked at length today at the workshop about the schools, and it seems like it would be appropriate to have a joint meeting with the council and the school board and just have these two items on the agenda. The marketing, what we're talking about with the city, and the Capitol Crossroads Committee report, and just make that the focus, because there's a ton of information in both of those. And we have not had one of those joint meetings. I think it's time to do that.
Perhaps Mr. Ahart and I could sit down and visit about that and bring something back.
Why don't we open up for public discussion and ask, Tom, Mr. Superintendent, do you want to make a couple of comments or reserve for some other moment?
Well, I'll just make a couple of short comments. We would certainly welcome a joint meeting. In fact, Bill Good, our COO, is here as well, and we're going to have a couple of the presentations that you just heard, shared with our board, hopefully in November. We have started experimenting a bit with a marketing effort for, specific to the schools, but we think that it was informed by the information that you heard today about a need to focus on learning what the perception of our community is, especially our young families, relative to the schools. And we've created, we've done a couple of things. You may notice some billboards around town that are highlighting some of the more positive aspects of the district. They're on a sort of a rotating basis there, and we're tracking some data on what kind of feedback we get from that. So it's a small effort, but we think one that will be impactful in a positive way. And we've also created a business education partnership committee that reports to the board, and we started that last spring. Our first effort with that group, and it's a group made up of a very diverse group of business leaders from around the community, is raising, we're in the process, and we're just about there, raising about $40,000 to engage in a survey that will focus on young families, their perceptions of the schools, and what they need in terms of schools and city to stay in the city when their children become school age. So we do have a couple of things going that tie in either directly or indirectly to the efforts that you heard about this morning.
Right, thanks for your comments. Anybody else in the public like to make comment this morning?
My name is Glenn Lyons. I'm the CEO of the Downtown Community Alliance, and I live on Southern Hills Drive. I too want to thank the committee for all their work. I was in maybe half of their meetings along the way. This is a really good piece of work. In terms of focusing on neighborhood revitalization, it's as good as any I've seen in the country. And its goals are significant. There will be challenges to find ways to fund this. The infrastructure piece is the most expensive, and yet, in many ways, the most important as well. And new sources of funding will have to be found, and we're prepared to help work with you as best we can. I think, though, that big investment, 18, 20 mil, we have to think about as an investment. A thousand new homes in a city of 200,000 people over a five-to-10-year period is not unthinkable. It may be today, but if we put the right building blocks in place, that's a quarter of a billion dollars worth of investment. Eight thousand homes having a $25,000 or $30,000 renovation is another quarter of a billion in reinvestment. That's what we can do, if we can marshal our resources, if we can reach a little farther than many central cities don't do. I do know that the perception of the school system here is a problem for many people who choose to move to the suburbs. But I just heard central campus, and I think it's, central campus is as good as any public school facility is seen in the country. No one could say after touring central campus that the quality of education isn't being delivered in Des Moines public schools. So I think there's a lot of material here, and to the extent that we can work together, we can do good things. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Marty Mock, 2701. Arthur, Chair of Des Moines Neighbors. I'd like to comment to the two different ones separately, the projects. Number one was the Capitol Crossroads Plan. I entered that with lots of concerns in regard to the issue of whether or not this is a top-down approach to trying to get neighborhood revitalization, something I think is doomed to fail. Anytime you run neighborhood revitalization from the top down, say to the neighborhoods, "This is what we're going to come and do for you." And as a result of the time that we spent, and I saw the shifting of the group and the openness of not only the chair, but also the city staff to work into that process, I have to agree that it's one of the best different programs we've ever come out with. And that it identifies needs, identifies the stakeholders. But the one concern I continue to have is that we do not look at that process as a top-down process, that through the whole process, we engage the neighborhoods throughout in order that they will buy into the process, but not tell them what they need to do, but engage them as a partnership, and say to them, "Okay, here's the next stage. How can we do that to improve it? What can you do to help? What are your ideas?" As long as we continue on that process of communication, I believe this can be a springboard to a really special type of relationship between the city and the citizens and the business community in developing that. And so I do also appreciate the staff in their role in that. Now I'm going to change gears. This scares me to death, the housing review. Not in what it's trying to accomplish, but the methods it's using. As a neighborhood association leader, I concern myself anytime you streamline the process to get the neighborhoods, those pesky neighborhoods, out of the communication loop and try to do it in such a way as that we can go, you know, "Let's do this," but let's not have any neighborhood associations in there trying to do that. When you run and you take things out of the purview of the Plan and Zoning Commission and give it to staff, it takes community process out of the system. And the whole key element of where neighborhoods can get involved into development is through the Plan and Zoning and the Zoning Board of Adjustment. I sat on the Zoning Board of Adjustment for a long time, eight, nine, 10 years. And I know that the importance of development is in the details. You cannot take a particular bunch of regimented things and say, "Okay, we're going to change this or change this," about realizing that piece by property, piece of property, piece of property is very critical to the neighborhoods and how they're developed. For example, if you go ahead and you have administrative review and you say, "Oh, yeah, these homes in this section here can be developed the way the developer wants them," and there's no, for example, no garage, and there's just a piece of cement there. The reality is, the effect of that is, is that when those homes are probably going to be rented and not purchased, then those homes will also not have places to keep things like bikes and house things. And so you get this thing where you have a lot of different household goods around the house, around the yard, you've got places not to store a snow blower or a lawnmower. You've got this kind of thing where you have clutter developing because there was no place to put that. And developer says, "Well, they can put it down in the basement." And yet, it's against the rules and regulations to be able to do that. But they state that, even during meetings that I've heard them say it. I think the reality of this particular report is, they want to get the pesky neighborhoods out of the process of being okay for their developments. And my recommendation to all the neighborhood leaders is fight this with every tooth and nail that they have. Because if you take the ability from neighborhoods to weigh in on the process, you're going to get simply what somebody can do to be able to sell their property for whatever process they can. So I'd recommend very highly that you relook at this, the aspect of neighborhood involvement and neighborhood approval process, because basically, whatever that developer puts in there, the neighborhoods have to live with for years and years and years and years. Thank you.
Wendy, hurry up.
I'm going to be quick, I promise. One thing I wanted to say positive about Russ's presentation, I think expanding the NERP is a good idea. When we were discussing how we were going to allocate some of those funds, a project came up that was semi-s sewer-related, but we couldn't do that because the allocation didn't allow it. I'd like to see that. The other thing was the marketing campaign on both sides of this. I left you a voicemail a couple of weeks ago on one of the meetings or whatever that I went, question was asked, didn't get answered, the ball dropped, and it occurred to me as they're talking this, that's marketing. You know, it's how you present it. And then diversity, avoiding the cookie cutter. This is where I'm going to ask for some caution in regard to Russ and Amber's plan. Avoid the micromanagement. I think the difference with some of the outer communities, as Skip was talking, from what I hear from friends, from what I experience even working with West Des Moines, is that, "Okay, this is what you're doing. We got it. Go do your thing. Have a good time." And I'm sensing maybe people in Des Moines are sensing more of a micromanagement situation where the city feels like they have to have the hand in it every step of the way. Trust the people that are doing what they say they're going to do, and then do your follow-up inspections in the end and move on. That would be the only contribution I would have, because, like I said, people doing projects, I've heard of this constant red tape, and it discourages them from wanting to work here. So that's my two cents.
Creighton Cox with Home Builders Association of Greater Des Moines and Developers Council, 6751 Corporate Drive, Johnston, Iowa. Appreciate the opportunity to speak today. Want to start off with a couple of things, and we'll go quickly. When we're talking about communication with home builders and developers, and we received an email on Friday afternoon about today's meeting, I'm still unaware of the October 17th meeting. There was a meeting last year, I believe, the forestry, October 12th. I was just speaking with Ron Grub, Jerry's Homes. Neither one of us knew about that as well. And I did notice that on the email I received on Friday, it didn't include Savannah Homes, it didn't include Jerry's Homes, it didn't include a few key members of Hubble that have been very involved in this process. So at least on that very base, there are things being done and communicated that are not getting involved, that are not getting the rest of the key stakeholders involved. So I'm a little disappointed in that, although personally, between myself and Phil, we communicate well, and I appreciate the phone call on Friday afternoon from Councilwoman Hensley. We also go through these, and some of the things with development and builders, there are, although there were several recommendations that development community and building community asked for, really, most of them are come back with, "You have to deal with what we already have on the books. We're not going to change it. The signs and advertising, we're not going to change it. You have to deal with that as it is. We're not going to change the forestry and tree ordinance. You're going to have to deal with that as it is." So it doesn't seem that there's a, the audience is not listening to some of the concerns that the development and the building community have. Eliminating the PUD, the administration of subdivision bonds, the P and Z review, those are very much needed. We do appreciate that those are being looked into, and we do hope that that changes. As you can see, there are not that many builders and developers here today. I think one is the short notice. Two is what I've repeatedly been told, there have been seven to nine of these meetings over the last eight, 10 years, and very little changes. We actually see, although the community of Des Moines wants more development, they need that growth, there's a tax base that is untapped and can be built out, but continue to make it more difficult to be able to build and develop. The tree ordinance, for example, you've got several developers that, and developers and builders want trees. Homeowners want trees. We want to be able to save those, but some of the stipulations you put in, and there's a larger canopy in the city of Des Moines than there was 20 years ago. And I believe that that is because of putting in two and four trees per house. But now you have some developers with tree-lined areas that are looking at putting in those in forestry preserves. That not only does not develop that land and increase the tax base, it actually takes it out of the tax base completely, because right now it's on an ag base. So those are concerns we have, and nobody's rushing into Des Moines to build and develop. Des Moines, being the largest population in the metro, actually had a nearly 10% drop-off in year-to-date, August to August of 2012 to 2013, in single-family standalone homes. That's unheard of throughout the rest of the metro. You're seeing 20, 50, even 100% growth on those single-family homes, because the economy is coming back very, very strong. You've got other communities with different school districts, and I understand that that is a concern. I know the facts. I know Des Moines has a very strong school district, but there's a perception there. So we're seeing things that, in the city of Des Moines, are not being reflected in the other communities. And quite honestly, we aren't asking other communities to become the city of Des Moines, because there's a reason that we, we in the development and builder community have not been driving to come in here. The land is available. The cost is very good to be able to build here, and you can build that affordable structure. But the cost in that takes the time, either in permitting, in P and Z, in the meetings with the neighborhoods, and we're not asking neighborhoods not to be involved. We believe that is a vital part, but we also are understanding that there's an unwritten rule that neighborhoods have veto power. We believe that if you meet all of the criteria that P and Z shows, that is on the books, that is in the codes and the ordinances, that there should be some support, and if not support, at least clarification from the city stating that this developer, this builder is doing everything that we've asked, they're following all the rules. And because when developers and builders go into those meetings, I believe that they are looked at as not a trustworthy source. The city is a trustworthy source. The city's staff is a very trustworthy source. And having those city staff members at those neighborhood meetings to at least clarify that rules, regulations, and codes are being met, and that these qualify for the process that the city's asking for, is a vital, vital opportunity for that growth to continue and build up. No, Des Moines right now needs their tax abatement program. However, the tax abatement program you have currently makes it unfeasible and... However, the tax abatement program you have currently makes it unfeasible, and I'll ask Ron Grub to speak on that as well. Economically, it makes it almost unfeasible to be able to produce those projects, especially in the multifamily. The changes, and Jerry's Homes has one example of a vinyl siding that was put up several years ago before the economy went down. There's been a change. It now asks for LP siding. That actually not only makes the two adjacent buildings look incongruent, but also makes it economically unfeasible. These are some issues that we believe still need to be addressed. We appreciate the opportunity. We want to be able to be stakeholders in this, but right now, it's easier to go with other communities. That's where the drive is for the homeowner to purchase in and quite honestly, it's easier to be building and developing there as well. Appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Mr. Mayor, member of the councils, I'm Ron Grub with Jerry's Homes. And we build in pretty much every community around here, from Indianola to Ankeny, all the way to Newton and back to Waukees. So it is very cumbersome to build in this community. We have always gotten along very well with the staff. Some of the things that you have are a little more stringent than some of the suburbs. But our business model is we're going to be pretty much in every community. But there are certainly a lot of others that do not have to participate in the city of Des Moines and choose not to. I listen to these stories from the people and I don't always agree with them, but again, that's their perception and it's something that always needs to be kept in mind, that it's much easier to go to the outer suburbs and develop. Some of it is just basically because of the size of the community. Yes, your P and Z, I believe, has 15 people on it. To convince those people, sometimes it's been rather difficult. But I believe that it's still a great vibrant community and there's a lot of opportunities. You have annexed 4,000 to 5,000 acres south of town. We'd like to see something happen there. But I just recently was told of something. I had sold 48 multifamily apartment units and was found out that the tax abatement had changed. And late last week, the buyer, after I went to them and explained how the tax abatement was going to change and what that cost was going to be, they sent me a rescission of the offer. So that project will probably not be moving forward now. But I still would encourage you to listen to the builder community. We do have some concerns and I think it is vital to have other builders want to come to this community and build and develop here because it's a wonderful, wonderful place. Thank you.
All right. Anybody else? Thank you all for coming. Appreciate your input and we value that not only today, but on an ongoing basis and think that it's everybody's participation that makes Des Moines a great place to live and to work and to raise a family and hopefully to build a new home. So with that, let's call this meeting adjourned. And for those that are so excited that can't, haven't had enough, come on back tonight and sit down in the city council meeting.